So if you go on, we'll go on to the bit. We have our earlier, right? Just catch up. Well, that's good. Sounds good too.
I thought Rochelle Abbott was supposed to be here and talk to me. So I'll delete the word that I had that you have that one in there.
Verified that they're not doing nothing.
Looks pretty here. He's got 30 seconds. I'm just taking on one page of my.
Maybe she's with Richard.
Water.
Yeah, that's her. Or Richard. I would say Richard.
I'm gonna say Richard.
I know.
Locations are. Some of them share. How do you do?
You don't have to. Oh, I just saw this.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. The agenda of Rachel Abbott and Step was to be here this morning to, uh, go over No Small Matter, the impact of high-quality preschool education. But I don't know what's happening. It was Abbott, so maybe she will attend.
Well, I know what she was going to talk about is a presentation at the Community Arts Center on April the ninth. And there is a kind of, I don't know if it's a movie, I guess it's like a movie, that is going to talk about the importance of high-quality preschool education. And she was going to have tickets available to give people if they wanted to come to that presentation. I'm not quite sure what happened. I talked to her Friday.
Maybe she didn't start her clock ahead.
Or maybe she got mixed up with her nine o'clock work session or.
So if she does come in, we will address that when, if she gets here. Establishment of.
She is.
She is.
Hi. On the first time.
Yes.
I did hear you. We can take you today.
Really? Whoa, you're sure? Do you want this?
Do you need time to get things together?
I'm all ready. You're right here, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want something to put your notes on?
Level for you. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Rochelle Abbott with the Step Office of Aging and also, sorry, so we have Office of Aging, but I'm here actually today for the Early Learning Resource Center. The Early Learning Resource Center is actually a new program under the Step umbrella and is really focused on the engagement of families to ensure that they have high-quality childcare and then on the other end to focus on providers and ensure that they have high-quality staffing and facilities to meet the childcare needs. As you know, in Clinton County, we have a, um, not enough slots for children as we do children within childcare settings. And so Step, uh, the Early Learning Resource Center is actually doing a very large event here on April ninth, uh, where we actually will have a documentary which we're going to be focusing in on the community and understanding the local needs of the childcare. I can give you some. And so the documentary is called No Small Matter and this is really a focused documentary that talks about childcare and early learning within, um, kind of the global sense and across the nation. And then we actually have a panel of local individuals who will be focused on the, uh, kind of bringing it localized. We have Tracy Campanini, who is the Deputy Secretary of the Office of Child Development and Early Learning. We have Richard Dow, who's UPMC, um, doctor there. We have the superintendent from Southern Tioga School District. We have the VP of HR from Sheets, who is actually on the Early Learning Investment Committee as a Commissioner. And we have Darlene Burley, who is a Director of a preschool program, and Caroline Allen, who is with the Youth, the Pennsylvania Youth Development Network. The moderator is actually a professor at Leincolne College in the Education Department and we're really hoping to fill the seats. One of the other things that we're doing, um, with the panel is before the actual screening of the documentary, we are having a meet and greet. And so we're asking if folks would like to register for the meet and greet. The Commissioners definitely want you to be there. And that's going to be with, um, kind of all of the business professionals, municipal people, all of what we're calling early learning ambassadors, so individuals that are really going to be focused on ensuring that we're telling the right story for our community. We have quite a lot of individuals that are coming from Clinton County, which I think is great in terms of providers and families, um, that will be there. And so this is a really kind of a great way and really important for us to start the conversation so that people understand the real need for childcare within our area. The event is called, uh, is really focused on awareness into action. At the actual event, there will be kind of sign-ins for people who may want to sign up to be part of any of the committees. You'll have the documentary, you'll actually be able to meet and discuss these, uh, the situation of childcare within Clinton County with the panelists. So we really hope that we see folks there and wanted to kind of address the Commissioners specifically because it's a great event. It's free, um, and so I do have, you do need like a ticket to come in, but the tickets are free. And so I'll give you guys each one and then I will leave some for you as well and that you can hand out to folks. So. Is there any questions?
Is the, the goal to increase the availability to childcare in our community?
So the goal is to begin the conversation so people know that there's an issue. And the hope is that through the people that we've brought together through like the meet and greet and see the documentary, that we can really kind of start a dialogue about it. Because the great thing would be for a local industry to say, we know that there's a childcare need for our individuals. Can you help us bridge a gap? Can we do an onsite facility for childcare? Is there a way that we could pay the Early Learning Resource Center to then pay the parents, you know, to help support or offset the cost of childcare? All those things are possible and they're happening in other places. They're just not happening here. And so I think by talking to our local leaders, by talking to, you know, our local business professionals, we need to invest in our futures and the only way that we're going to be able to do that is through the early learning piece of the component that we're focusing on. Because it's not, it's not about babysitting. It's not about that piece. It's really about providing the high-quality education on an early level and then providing the amount of access. Because there is an access issue in, in Clinton County for sure. There's more kiddos than we have spaces. You know, there is no non-traditional facilities, you know? And so this may prompt, um, some, you know, business professionals to say, I want to start a childcare center, you know? And I want to do it overnight and in the weekends because that's a, that's a huge area. We don't have, uh, individuals that have slots open in the evenings, you know, or overnight or on the weekends often. And our families who are often low income need those kind of hours, you know, to work those jobs.
Ms., could you define by age early childcare?
Yeah. And so we are focused on zero to five. That's what we're focused on. And so the Early Learning Resource Center goes to kind of, uh, elementary school kids, but this in terms of the No Small Matters and what we're focusing on in terms of conversation is really kind of the zero to five population.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Rochelle.
So we hope to see you there. I will leave some more of these flyers and such because I think it's really important that we get the word out and, and we have a really good showing. This is the first time ever that we've actually had the Deputy Secretary of the Office of Child Development and Early Learning come to an event. And so it's really awesome. And then to have the VP from Sheets, like, jump on board, I mean, it's, it's really exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Establishment of the Clinton County Recreation Advisory Board. Commissioner Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sometime the county has been talking about establishing a county recreational advisory committee. We're gonna go now with the name of committee instead of board after running this through the solicitor. The, um, resolution will be brought before the board on the nineteenth since we have it on the twelfth to establish the committee and also the nine members, volunteers that will serve on that committee. The idea is to, um, have an organization of people that are interested in the many different areas that we have in the county as far as recreational, um, items and to then develop subgroups, um, to work on, for example, walking trails, um, neckline trails, ATV trails, water sports, everything that is going in the county typically right now when individual groups, I know, for example, we'll talk about the Chest and Throw with the ball fields, they run into issues because they have no organization to go to that can and point them in the direction of grant writing. Our grant writer here will help assist with grants as they come available. But the state to the grant programs like partnerships. So we can have a advisory committee where we're bringing people together to go after grants. It's going to help and also get people together in a room of like interests to help develop walking trails. We have many events that occur in the county as far as races, but as far as established walking trails, that's something that we need to continue to work on. That's one example. So we'll be bringing that to the attention of the Commissioners on the nineteenth for those approvals.
Great. Thank you. Approval of proposed merit hire system for Clinton County children and youth. Kathy.
Last week, we received a letter from, um, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services and they approved our application for merit hire. The team has been working on this since September of 2018. The team consists of Tristan Roth, who is very instrumental in helping us get immediate feedback or return of information on Bauer and Justin Hauser. This is, um, a great thing for the Children and Youth Agency. It moves us from civil service to merit hire. One of the problems Cadets are having, you do have civil service, they may have openings and with civil service you have to select someone on the list. And I do know some counties that they have openings for children and youth. They may have vacancies, but there's no one on their list to hire, so they have to go without. This will continue funding for children and youth. I have a copy of each one. Tristan, do you want to say more?
Um, just, we're super excited that this is finally coming to a close. I mean, if you want to, I don't know if you've interviewed it already, I can try to answer any questions you might have about the actual plan. And I have sort of a binder here that breaks down everything if you'd like to take the work of that. But some of the things that the procedure keeps up in, things like standardized interview questions, um, so, you know, we're having, it's the exact same process for every single person who applies for a job and then, um, you know, standardized reference questions and writing sample requests and sort of just outlines exactly how we should go through the process of posting to hiring, um, somebody and even goes into, you know, training afterwards. So it really outlines everything that we will do. And this is really, we've been doing the vast majority of the things that are in the plan already and happened for years. This is just making it official through the state as to exactly, you know, how it will proceed and what work we're hiring.
So if it's, Tristan, it said we're really excited about it. There's a lot of great things in merit hire, um, as HR, I'd like to see us use that county line because the procedures are great. The standard, there's a lot of good HR, um, procedures in that. You know, standardized questions, the applicants. We even last summer, we even started expanding our recruiting efforts to different colleges and things like that. So we could think of.
And there is, you know, short-term and long-term, goal plans for the agency, equal opportunity employment plan for children. It's really very in-depth. So what you have in front of you is the plan itself, but it also has this much more attachments that go along with it. So it's kind of overwhelming. But there, there's so much that goes, that we had to do in order to get it approved. So if you want to take a look at any attachments and have that, you can have the honor for a lot if you'd like.
Thank you.
And this will be on March nineteenth.
March nineteenth.
Agenda to officially accept this responsibility for following this.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your work on achieving this.
Coronavirus preparations.
Let's just start, like, yeah, housekeeping supervisor to make sure that we're doing everything possible as far as our buildings and stuff. And certainly not a scare tactic, but I think it's proven if you've been watching the news lately, people travel and coming into contact with individuals that, um, I think we should be continuing to be aggressive in our cleaning, which they are doing. I've also talked to her about putting up a couple more of the hand sanitizers in some of the, our buildings where, um, most of the people are congregating. Just be aware, um, you know, I noticed Lena had a cough this morning, but I don't think Lena was on a cruise or anything, but.
No, I wasn't.
So we're doing everything we can as far as, as stepping up and using the right materials for cleaning our buildings.
Just be aware, I think everybody's aware, wash your hands. Do, do it. It seems to me that something like this has to happen to tell people to wash their hands. I mean, it goes without saying, a good hand can prevent a lot of what's happening out there. So everybody just be aware of your surroundings. If you have to cough or sneeze, do it into your elbow and on, under your hand and then shake somebody else's hand and so forth. I know, uh, don't go to try to buy any kind of, uh, Purell or any kind of, uh, antiseptic hand cleaner or anything because it's not available. I know I looked on Amazon and so forth. They were charging as high as fifty dollars an ounce. I mean, that's just criminal. It's criminal is what it is. So.
Make your own laws, really. Two steps. Two-thirds part rubbing alcohol, one-third alcohol, mix it, shatter it, put it in a bottle, label it, squirt it, girl, set it up.
Even rubbing alcohol is getting hard to come by. Oh, is it? Yeah.
Thank you.
I, oh, yeah. But that, yes, it's, it's very easy to make and I know some people. I, I read something online where people were using vodka. It has to be at least seventy percent alcohol to be effective. I don't think there's any vodka out there that's seventy percent, so. But, uh, yeah. So just be aware, I think. I think we're in a fairly, uh, good position here in Clinton County because of our environment and so forth, where we've got some wide open spaces and so forth. Just be aware.
If I may.
You may.
Uh, other measures that we've taken from a county standpoint is we do have some links on our website to the Center for Disease Control as well as the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And we've reached out to the employees here in the county, making sure that they have access to those sites and just reminder to them to be diligent in their hygiene as well.
As is previously stated, there will be no meeting this Thursday, March the twelfth. We will have a work session on next Monday and next Commissioners' Meeting will be March the nineteenth. Jan, anything?
Did you guys talk about the Bowing Valley Trail event that's coming up at the meeting I missed at all?
No.
Wanted to mention that. It's been in the paper. Um, on March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, at, starts at the Castania Fire Company. There's a five K walk run on our Bowing Valley Trail. They're going to disperse plant seeds that would be good for butterflies. There is a carrot cake and cupcake baking competition, I guess because carrot cake is more healthy, I'm not sure. Uh, they're having a lunch catered. So there's a whole lot going on and I believe Clean Scapes is one of the main sponsors of that event. So hopefully a lot, it'll be nice then if people can go out and participate on the trail. It's a great thing. And I have your schedule, I hope.
Before we do that, I want to mention about the ramp. In case you're not aware, the courthouse is temporarily closed. We have an issue with the flue that goes up along the, the side of the building there on the J Street, uh, side of the building. Some of the bricks are loose and have fallen. So we have temporarily, uh, take that area off. Anyone needing assistance, that needs handicapped assistance into the courthouse, there's a phone number there. You call the phone number, the Deputy Sheriff will immediately come out, assist anyone that needs assistance to the ramp on the other side of the courthouse, down in the basement and then get them on the elevator there. We've already had the adjuster here. We're moving forward with the contractor, already contract, um, been in contact with contractor. Problem is contractors are scheduled, so it is something of an emergency. So as soon as we can get that work done, they'll be removing those bricks and fixing that, um, as soon as they can. But we just don't want to take a chance that anyone goes up that ramp and a brick could fall.
And it was wind, didn't it?
It was a, well.
Well, it was a combination of the weather and the age of the bricks and the wind that we had last week that finally knocked them loose and dropped them down.
Mortar on those top rows of bricks, mostly on the backside of the flue, um, has been over the years, been deteriorating and the bricks are now loose.
Building is well over a hundred years old, so things happen. Now schedules.
Okay. The meeting of the Recreation Committee is today at?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty. Um, this afternoon, our Bond Council and other people will be here to sign all paperwork having to do with that refinanced bond issue. And that will happen at one o'clock. And I think it closes actually tomorrow, so they're calling this a pre-closing, signing all the documents and then closing it tomorrow. The bonds are all sold and everything should come together tomorrow. It's been a little bit of a long process. At three PM, Carrie Kepler, our Grants Administrator, will meet with you all about the broadband issue. Tomorrow at, that's March tenth, I have SUS with you at noon. Am I missing anything in the morning?
We meet with the VA Director at nine o'clock.
Nine AM, the VA Director, and then SUS with you at noon. Jeff, you have your meeting with Judge Miller and Children and Youth tomorrow at one thirty. Um, at three thirty, Katie DeSilva has asked for a quick meeting with you about the build grant, that's a grant with the other two counties for, um, the walking trail.
Tomorrow also at noon, Jan, there is going to be a pre-construction meeting for the renovations to the courthouse, courtroom and so forth. There's a pre-construction meeting at noon tomorrow.
Okay. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, the eleventh, at eight thirty, Jeff and Gabe are meeting about the tourism grant applications.
Julie.
And Julie. At ten thirty is the prison board at the prison. At one o'clock, uh, we got an invitation for a White House briefing, which is a phone call, uh, about the coronavirus from someone at the White House, I guess Homeland Security or someone there. We'll be, uh, we have to call into that. I think you have to pre-register for that if anybody wants to do that at one o'clock. At six thirty on Wednesday, the Solid Waste of the Army meets. Uh, on the twelfth, when we have no Commissioners' Meeting, I have the three of you going to a, the breakfast, you know, meeting is called EMS in Crisis Summit and that's in State College. Starts at eight thirty or eight, I'm not sure which one, and goes till eleven. And that's why we're not having a meeting because you guys are going to that. At one thirty, the Court Security Advisory Board meets. At three thirty, Jeff is meeting with, um, our Custodial Supervisor. That's a timely to talk about Corona. And at five thirty on Thursday, there's a timeout, uh, by the partnership at the Fraternal Order of Eagles. On Friday, Miles, you have the children, or the Center County Youth Center meeting. Um, let's see, Angela, at ten, you're meeting with Jeff Rich of the Housing Authority. There's just sort of a overall meeting on what goes on there. And at four PM, Jeff is going to Bill Siegel's Retirement at Step.
Seat of Court.
I always get those mixed up. Seat of Court. On Monday at nine AM is the work session and then, uh, there's the Step Board meeting at four o'clock. Did I miss anything?
There you go. Thanks.
Okay.
Commissioners' Topics. Commissioner Harding.
Thank you. Last week, uh, the three Commissioners met with Tracy Witter from PPNL. We had a really great discussion about PPNL's role in our community and Ms. Witter shared with us the Bright Lights Campaign in honor of the hundredth anniversary of PPNL. On there, recognizing nonprofit workers who are transforming their communities through the work that they do to improve education outcomes and make our communities vibrant and sustainable. Ten Bright Light Grants of ten thousand dollars will be awarded to nonprofit agencies. And so I have these flyers up here if you know anyone that could be nominated for that Bright Light, uh, award. She also talked a lot about, uh, the work that PPNL does in the state. They serve twenty-nine counties in the state of Pennsylvania and Tracy covers nine of those counties. I thought it was interesting that the largest customer of PPNL is First Quality. And so not only, um, you know, do we have the largest user of PPNL, uh, usage here in the county, um, they also offer a lot of grants and so we're going to be encouraging some of our entities to apply for those grants. The second thing I have yesterday, I attended a suffrage exhibit at the Foreman, uh, JC Hall on Water Street. And on Tuesday, the tenth, at one PM, there's a speaker, um, also relative to the suffrage movement here specifically in Clinton County and that's at one PM at Ross Library. And I know that Loretta Coltrane and a group of, of her, um, committee members are presenting a lot of different, uh, suffrage presentations and exhibits throughout our county over the next, the course of the year in celebration of the hundredth anniversary of women obtaining the right to vote. So I'd encourage you to watch out for those events and attend if able. Thank you.
Commissioner Snyder.
Well, Saturday, all three of us were able to attend the, um, historic, I would call signing of the agreement between the Masons at the Masonic Temple and the Arts Council in downtown Pink. I think that this is something that we are very much supporting and we'll do everything we can to assist, um, with helping the development of this art center. We see it as a huge attraction to downtown Lock Haven and to the community. So we're very excited about that. And all those that spoke on Saturday mentioned how they, much they were excited about this happening. So it's, uh, just another great thing that's happening in Clinton County.
Thank you. Public comments, questions? Mr. Henry.
Commissioner Kessinger, is it okay if I just approach a couple steps, please, sir? Thank you very much. Miles, I brought with me one page. I'm not going to read from it at all. In fact, I don't like reading for folks that they can read for themselves. So I just highlighted a few remarks. This is from the Baker Tilly Independent Accounting or Auditing Report of, uh, This is from the Baker Tilly Independent Accounting or Auditing Report of 2017. Miles, I think they generated, completed their audit and generated the report on September 28th of 2018. So from that standpoint, this is, say, 15 months in the public's hands or the county's hands. It's a 95-page report, Commissioner, and I've extrapolated page 79 of a particular concern I wanted to highlight here today. There's other questions I have, but I'll just maybe take on this topic if I may. Anyhow, page 95, 2017, section 001, this is relative to significant deficiency that Baker Tilly found, and it's, I'll just highlight what their concerns are. Again, significant deficiencies. Reconciliation procedures for bank and other significant accounts primarily related to county row offices should be reviewed and approved by initiating and dating the reconciliation by an individual independent of all payable dispersing, receiving, and general ledger functions. And county row officers maintain numerous agency fund cash accounts through which a significant volume of activity passes each year. Reconciliation for these cash accounts are not reviewed and approved by an appropriate individual independent of all related cash receipt dispersment functions. The effect, according to Baker Tilly, considering that transactions involving cash represent the predominant amount of activity within the county's general ledger, county management cannot be assured that misstatements are not occurring within the daily transactions and relied upon by management in its decision-making processes and enlists this cause. There is currently no formal documentation or requirement that certain best practices be followed to adequately secure transactions to prevent or detect misstatements due to error or fraud. I'm not here to accuse anybody of anything, Commissioner Kessinger. I just wanted to point out publicly that these conditions exist. And again, I'm not accusing anybody or any department or row officers of any neglect. However, the independent auditor says we're not safeguarding the taxpayers' money, and I wanted to highlight that to you for your thoughts and considerations. And I'll be glad to take any questions or comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
The two of our county auditors here, are those accounts audited by the?
They are. And if you read on, the recommendation is we recommend that county management consider implementing steps. Now county management would refer to your offices. And as you know, you don't make any policies or procedures relating to the podeter's office or the sheriff's office, and those are the offices that they are referring to. So they're not going to make any kind of assumptions or policies dealing with it, and that's all that that's referring to.
I think what happens in a large degree on these types of audits, when you have a small organization, I know when I sat as court administrator, our audits from the DJ offices by the state often had the same responses in their audit because you had two to three people in the office who actually handled all the accounts. And when you don't have a large staff, you're going to find that in almost any audit that's done by a state association, a state auditing agency, or an independent auditing agency, you're going to find those recommendations. Mr. Emick said they're not accusations, they are recommendations that somehow you try to have someone who's not directly responsible in depositing or handling those funds sign off in the end that those funds were handled correctly.
Our county auditors have audited those accounts.
My way.
And have you ever found any discrepancies?
With the relatives.
Thank you.
With all due respect to you good folks, and I believe that to be so, which you're stating, that's not consistent with the independent auditor states, however, Miles.
And as I said, you're going to find that, Mr. Emick, if you look at any audit that has been done through the state, through the DJ offices, you're going to find that exact response at the end of almost every audit I have ever witnessed in my time working in those organizations.
Yes, sir, thank you. What it does say, not a couple of accounts, he said, the predominance of accounts.
Yes, I know.
The real way to solve that is to hire more people within those smaller offices so that all duties can be separated.
My opinion would be, and then I'll hush, my opinion would be that we ought to have all necessary safeguards.
We have, and I'm sure we do.
To ensure the safety of the taxpayers' money.
We have not had one incident, I'm saying that it could not happen, but we have not had one incident in this county where one penny has been found to be misappropriated by county offices.
Well, again, I'm not here to accuse, I'll just quote Ronald Reagan. He said, "Trust, but verify." According to our independent auditor who were paid how many thousands of dollars for, I don't rightly know. Well, you read the verbiage for yourself. It appears to me to be a significant concern according to his verbiage.
Michelle, am I correct that each audit that we've had over the years has this exact statement in it each and every year?
Every single year, and we do challenge it at every exit audit meeting. And the term significant is misleading. That's the lowest on the findings scale. It sounds the worst, but.
The other one is major.
Major deficiency. Yes, so that's the lowest of the audit findings.
So essentially this report falls man.
What are you saying there?
No, no, I'm saying that on the scale of audit findings, significant, although it sounds worse, that is their lowest of the findings.
Okay. A predominant sounds to me like a lot. It sounds like a lot. I guess that's my interpretation. I'm just taking it. By what he said, ma'am, again, I'm not accusing you or anybody of anything. But if we're not safeguarding the taxpayers' dollars of the community, we don't have to do that, don't you think?
Predominant of accounts means that we have a general fund and then each of these individual offices have their own account, so that would be a predominant.
And it does make mention of numerous cash accounts. That's what it says.
Numerous being that each office has their own accounts.
Can we see your challenge to the audit?
It was done verbally and.
So you don't have a written challenge or it's just?
Is there not any answer to that finding? Is there not a written response to the finding that we would have done on that page? I believe we have to respond to every finding.
I think she just said it was verbal only.
But we do a written response to the findings in the audit. They are included in the audit report. Because we do at the end of every audit, we have an exit interview and then we are charged with responding to the findings.
Jan, I can state this if this is helpful to you, ma'am. In this 95-page Baker Tilly report, I saw no response to the audit.
Well, there is one.
Okay. I trust that to be so, if you say so.
The corrective action plan, yes. And that's not part of the report?
I have to look.
Yeah.
But because they see the corrective action plan and that's.
Okay, so we wrote a corrective action plan in which we would have responded to any findings in any audit. And because that finding is in every one, every year that I've been here, our response has been basically the same to that finding.
I guess with all due respect to everybody in this room, if we're not safeguarding the taxpayers' dollars according to best practices, I think that perhaps might leave us vulnerable. No, it's probably a good idea to safeguard the public's money when anyone disagrees with that. Well, thank you.
Just to give an example, I do the register recorder bank statement every month. They have, beside Jan, Hawaii, there's three other women in that office. They go around the office and someone different each month reconciles the bank statement and the report. So not every office can do that, but it's being done in many of the offices.
Rita, I know you're a long time, and I trust that to be so. I'm just stating what the independent auditor's written.
And what year are you referring to?
This was for the county year 2017. The audit is usually done the following year. The report was generated September 28th of 2018, 95-page report, as Commissioner Kessinger said, indicated that is an ongoing concern from the previous year also. Again, folks, I'm not falsely accusing anybody of anything. The independent auditor, who you spent how many thousands of dollars for the taxpayers' money, that's what he said. We're not safeguarding significant cash accounts. I don't know, I'm not in your offices, I don't count the money. That's what he said. It's not a good report.
Anything else from anyone?
I have something. Usually I'm short and sweet, but today I can't feel comfortable doing that. As you know, Michael Remick and I run the Watchdog Group. We have almost 1,500 members now and a couple hundred that work with us privately because they fear retribution from government officials. So that's understandable. We are inundated with messages every single day. And over the past week, I have received, I don't have an exact number, probably nine messages about the prison's medical system and how it's being run and how it's failing and how it's broken. Since 2018, you have had a high overturn of nurses there, and that is why. They leave in a short period of time, one of them after three weeks because she didn't want to be part of the liability that she saw. LPNs are walking into the system and they're leaving because they see it's broken and they see the liability that the county will have. One states it's because of the lack of training, the risk of liability, they don't want to participate in a broken system. As of Friday, at the end of my shift, before I quit, I had 25 overdue labs, some of which are two months old, these are blood draws, to test for kidney function and things that can be medically critical, things you can get sick and die from. Two months in the system, undone. They don't like the boss who is there. She is controlling, and I'm not naming names, and I'm not even accusing, I'm telling you what I have been told by several people. She overrules LPNs, but she's a medical assistant. She takes medical requests and throws them away if she doesn't like the inmate. And that happened back in the 90s when I was there too. We had that. We had officers doing it more than the medical. We couldn't fix it because it was a paper trail. We couldn't catch it. It's 2020, what are we doing? We have technology now. We can certainly track these cases and make sure that these inmates are getting the care that they're legally required to get. This can't continue. I want it fixed, and I want to have somebody tell me that it's been fixed and I want to know how. I'm heading to DC at the end of this month. I will visit every applicable acronym that I can find in DC and I'll hit Harrisburg on the way back to ensure that we are no longer liable for people's misconduct and their lack of act. We have good people that were losing at the prison, medical people, that were losing at the prison because the system is broke and it needs to be fixed. And I think all three of you were on the prison board, right?
Correct.
Please, fix it. Thank you.
I would appreciate, Michelle, if some of these findings were related to us so that we were aware.
They come to us, they come to Michael and myself because they know we will protect them. We know that we will put our necks out when they hold on.
Just let me speak.
I'll do that.
Just let me speak, ma'am. I don't want, I don't want to know these people's names, I just want to know the incidences. I can't, we can't address something that we're not aware of. If these people are telling you, we need to know that.
That's why we're.
I totally agree, that's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much, but what I'm saying is if these come up and they're not brought to our attention, then we can't act.
You currently have a pregnant inmate in there that has yet to be seen by nobody gone.
See, that's something, I'm not there every day, we're not there every day.
It's personal. They come to us because they know we'll protect them.
I know. I would certainly appreciate it. I don't need names, as I said, but we can't address an issue if that issue is not brought to our attention.
Sir, we'd be pleased to do that.
Yes, yes.
And we will not mislead you. We'll give you the verbiage that's given to us.
That's fine.
Like you, Miles, we don't know what's going on there. It could be false claims too, who knows?
That's why I'm asking.
And it could be, who knows? I don't know the truth, so it's hearsay.
I don't want names, I just want incidences.
We'd be pleased to do that, sir.
Thank you.
All in all, thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Mr. Butler, you just came in, do you have something you need to address?
No, I was just giving you the invitation.
Okay, well, we'll certainly take that. Anybody else? If not, remember no meeting on Thursday. See you again, 9 o'clock Monday morning. Thank you.
She likes to swim.
Who said that?
I know.
Hi, Andrew.
Who on?
Miles.
How's it going?